David Chandler.
Here.
Joy Grissom.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
William Maxwell. Bill Mosley.
Here.
Mickey Robinson.
Here.
Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons.
Here.
Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
If everybody was standing, Mickey's gonna lay this on the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of August seventeenth, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve that minutes.
Their motion by Mickey to approve.
Oh, second it.
Second, Mr. Siemens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number four, Committee A report.
Uh, Committee A, we met September the fifteenth. Uh, first item, uh, is the school system budget amendment. Uh, they had a increase to their BEP funds after the final figures come in of a hundred and three thousand dollars, is that right? Uh, and also they received a grant of four hundred thousand, which I believe they're going to use for improvements to the building. There we go. Uh, that motion was made by Mr. Robertson to approve these amendments, the school budget, seconded by Mr. Chandler. I all voted yes, uh, and I'll make that in the form of a motion myself.
Mr. Anderson, second. I'll second. Mr. Chandler, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Uh, next item is the COVID grant funds and Greg, uh, correct me, I think we gotta go through each one of these separately. Okay. Okay. Yes, except for the first two.
Well, we know something about the first two.
Uh, hopefully, uh, talked to Tommy Lee yesterday with the Development District, which is helping us with this. He said he's hoping by Thursday. And by the first two, just for the ones in the audience, that's the grants for the community centers and the fire departments. We just wanted to make sure that we could use that money for that. But the ones that we did pass, first one is the mitigation supplies and efforts. Uh, it would be fifty thousand dollars would go towards this. Some of the uses would be for the churches to help with their filtration system, since that is some of the areas in the county where large groups congregate. This is all pertaining to COVID and to help, uh, prevent it and, you know. But, uh, that would be what the first one is, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Anderson, second.
Second.
Mickey, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next item, uh, is twenty-two thousand dollars for the restructure of the drainage area around the old fair building or the ag learning center. And I will make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Anderson, second.
Second.
Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment, please. Uh, which we have no problem with anything on here. Uh, but like this fire building, uh, the HVA systems for the library and Burke College and all that that's coming up. Like I said, nobody on my committee would have a problem with that. But from this point forward, anything doing with buildings or that type of stuff, we feel that should be run through Committee B first because we kind of feel like we're being left out of the loop on that.
I can occur with Brother Brian, we've been bypassed on Committee B too many times.
I'll apologize for that, but I mean, this was dealing with money and, uh, Committee A is the budget committee. So that's why we chose to go this route, but in the future we will look at that.
Uh, we appreciate it. I mean, we don't disagree with it at all. I mean, we're pretty sure that we would have went along with it anyway, but we'd just kind of like to be in the circle on that stuff.
Which now I will say this on Committee B, when we have Committee B, I try to have at least three items for Committee B. You know, if we brought in for one item, like for instance, the, the drainage around that building, we talked about that about three years ago when we were first talking, Joey and I was talking about this a little while ago. We talked about that about three years ago, when it was time to save a little money not to do that. If you remember, Brian, we, we did.
Yeah, actually, we've discussed it.
And then, then on this one, as Henry said, you know, we have an opportunity here that that's part of, one of the few things that we can use the COVID money for, which is upgrade HVAC systems. And yes, it is, it is that, but we also have a timeframe on our side because we have to get this money spent by May of next year and, and up and done.
Still, it is not a problem to notify Committee B.
I, I agree and, and I apologize for that, you know, but again, it dealt more with the money than I guess it did with the actual HVAC.
All we were saying is, I mean, you could have presented, y'all met on the fifteenth during the day. We could have had a meeting that night, y'all could run this by us and we'd have had no problem with it. Just keep us in the loop is all, all we're asking for.
That's just two hundred and fifty dollars spent too for one, one item, so that was not, that's the thing.
That's actually two, I mean, you've got the HVAC down here.
For the budget committee.
Well, true, there's a lot more items on there to do though. My fault, I'll do it, I'll, I'll take care of it the next time.
Uh, we're not raising too much cane, but we just want to be in the loop. We kind of felt like we was left out.
I got you.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it, guys.
All right, uh, next item is leak and repair and upgrades the wells at the old county landfill. We set aside eighty-two thousand dollars to, uh, to help with this. And I'm.
Specify the reason.
Well, this is just to, as you know, what, we're hoping to get out from underneath this way, or this landfill by what, twenty twenty-six? Twenty twenty-six, but we have a leach problem right now, leak in there. And that's, that's basically, and there's, there's a well or two that they're going to just kind of replace, uh, in there as well. That's where they do the testing and that's, of course, T-DAC has told us we gotta fix it. If we don't fix it, we'll have, uh, with this money, which we can, we're gonna have to end up coming back and taking it out of sanitation, uh, fund to do that. But it's.
Penalty, correct?
Pardon?
It's a daily penalty, correct?
It's a daily penalty if we don't get it fixed. They're, they're bearing with us, I asked them to wait until we formed a budget from the COVID money and they said they'd be fine. I notified them the other day and let them know that it went through the first phase, which was the budget meeting the other day, uh, which is also sanitation committee. And they said that was fine, just let them know what happened tonight.
Does this have to go back to the planning commission? Is this the one that has to go back to the planning commission?
Oh, this has nothing to do with planning commission.
Okay, I was just asking because I remember we got something on that.
All right, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Mr. Sam, Mr. Anderson, second. I'll second. Mr. Chandler, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Wi- William Maxwell, Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
All right, next, uh, item is the bonus for the county employees. Uh, this, we figured two hundred thousand, but I don't know if it'll cost. Yeah, just to make sure we're covered. But what this would do is your full-time county employees would be looking at a two hundred dollar pay incentive for up to fifteen months worked. There you go, March twenty twenty to, to when was it? Tw- June twenty-one, your part-time employees, it would be a hundred dollars for each month that they had worked during that time. And I will, with a minimum of four hundred hours, all right. And then, of course, that also can, uh, is the road department in that too. Yeah. And there's, yeah, no elected officials are in this bonus. No elected officials will receive this bonus, it's just county employees, so I will make that in the form of a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on this. Go ahead. Ask a question. Go ahead. Well, I want everybody to understand, I'm not making this statement to cheat, cheat you, cheat you out of any money. I hope all of you get your three thousand and fifteen hundred dollars because you wore a mask, you come out here during the COVIDs and worked, and that's not hard, not easy to do. You, you do deserve it, and I'm not here, I'm not making this statement because I'm trying to beat you out of the money. Politicians we got in Nashville, Washington, everywhere else. I hope they get this message because I'm fixing to give it to you. Now, they paid people six hun- six hundred dollars to stay home and not work. Now they're paying people to work it, and you deserve it, I'm sure. Quite sure you do, and I'm not trying to take it away from you. I am disgusted with the people in, in, in the state of Tennessee and Washington because, and I hope Governor Lee gets this message. We got people in this county because this is one of the poorest counties in the state of Tennessee. We got people in this county, after they pay their gro- buy their groceries, pay their utility bills, barely can get their medicine. When and who's going to help Van Buren County residents that are on low income, maybe living on eight hundred dollars a month? Who gonna help them? Now, we got forty-nine full-time employees gonna get three thousand dollars. We got twenty-one part-time employees gonna get fifteen hundred, most of them, ninety percent of them. That comes to a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and where's the other? Rest of the money at? Pardon me? That'll come out of what they get, I understand that. But on the two hundred thousand, we got worth the rest of the money from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand that they're gonna get.
That's what she's talking about, we have, we're responsible. We're responsible for to pay part of their social security, Medicare, unemployment, retirement. We have a, we pay seven percent of salaries of, for retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield back. Got a motion, Mr. Siemens, the second, the Mickey, roll call please.
Well, before we get the vote, I would like to clarify that, uh, this is federal money, not state money. So any stipulations, it comes from Washington, not Nashville, so. No. And one other thing too, and Bill mentioned that, and I, I, I see what he's saying about the people of the county that may need help on rent, utilities and things like that, but there are several agencies and we gotta, we put it on our Facebook, we got it on the board out there. When y'all leave, people, when you go by there, you'll see THDA, there's a number there. Let me tell you, they got all kinds of money to help people with rent, utilities and things of that nature. There's an organization out of Crossville, uh, it's a homeless organization, but also their mission is to keep people from being homeless and help them with the rent. And you also, with this money, you have to be affected by COVID in any way, shape, form or fashion, whether there's COVID, you were missed work because of being, uh, having COVID, or family members have had COVID and you were quarantined. So there's limitations upon that money that we just can't go out and say, you know, Ms. Siemens, here's your check for five hundred dollars to pay your, on your utilities. So you have to have that effect that happens upon you. So, but there is many organizations, also on the UCHRA, uh, there was a meeting they had last week for the elderly. Uh, it's their aging section and it's the ADD and Darlene Simmons, I don't know if she's here tonight, she's not here, but at her number at nine four six seven one five one, you can call her. She can also help, anybody could help, uh, she could get anybody help for medication. She could also get help for their rent and their utilities, food, all those are the, part of the food, part, uh, part two. Uh, there's many ways and, and out there, and if anybody out there that's listening on Facebook, if you want to know any more of those numbers and you don't have those, and if you hadn't looked at our Facebook, just give us a call tomorrow, nine four six two three one four, and we'll be glad to help you and point you in that right direction. We kind of do that about every other day anyway, so.
And this, all of these that y'all are voting on, it's gonna come back next month. Setting in capital projects. When you approve all this, I've got to go back and create all these line items for all these individuals, then we'll move it. You know, there's four funds that are gonna have salaries coming out of them. All of those have got to be moved to their line items to do this, so it's not like, hey, we're gonna go and pay this right now. It's gotta come before y'all next month to approve those line items to move it, to pay all this stuff out.
And, and when we do that, we're gonna have to do it in the form of resolution too, for each, for each one of those funds. And she'll specify within that resolution on where it goes, what numbers it goes to and line items and things of that nature.
Because this is not setting in any of our funds.
Yeah.
What would be the timeline for the employees to receive those funds?
Uh, hopefully before Thanksgiving. It, it's a lot.
It, it will not be on a regular payroll, like for instance, I think we talked about what, second week in November?
Yes.
Second week in November, and they would just get one check on that, yeah. So hopefully we'll do it that way. And for the county employees here, another thing to point out too, for the county employees, th- this will be the third year you hadn't got a raise. I think the last time you got one was in two thousand nineteen, and so I think you vastly deserve it, um, each one of you. But anyway, and I also want to point out, county officials, elected officials are not a part of this. Uh, neither is the election administrator nor the clerk and master is a part of it as well. So this is only the county employees other than those officials. That's it, so there's. None of the county commission, no.
Roll call.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
No.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
And lastly, for the COVID grant funds, uh, we set aside fifty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars for upgrades to the heating and air for the ag learning center, the library and the Barrett College building. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Sam, Mr. Anderson, second.
Second.
Second, but Mickey, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, fair, electric bill, Fair Board submitted a request for the county to pay, uh, the, uh, temporary power for the time that the fair was taking place, no action was taken. Under new business, uh, we approved the purchase of the Zoll equipment for the EMS for a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. This is funded through a grant. It is a, uh, county has forty-five percent, USDA grant fifty-five. Yep, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Anderson, second. I'll second. Mr. Chandler, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Next item, uh, we approve to get the three-year warranty on this Zoll devices. Uh, this is eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, this will come from line item one oh one, fifty-four, nine hundred dash three, nine nine, other public safety contracts. And I'll make this in the form of a motion.
Question, please. Isn't that quite a bit of money for a three-year warranty?
Very expensive.
It, it does seem like a lot, but when you look at how much the machines cost, they are very costly machines.
Wanna hear? Do you stand? You feel that's adequate, uh, eight, twenty-three thousand dollars for a three-year warranty?
It's eighteen thousand.
I'm sorry, eighteen thousand. You feel comfortable with that? Thank you. Motion, Mr. Sam, Mr. Anderson, second.
I'll second.
Second, Michael, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yeah.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
That's it from Committee A.
Item number five, appointment of Bill Mosley and Sherry Wilson effective October first to the planning commission. The action.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Chandler, I hear a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Siemens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Item number six, reappointment of Dwayne Hodges and Mike Solomon to the planning commission.
That's Diane Hodges.
Diane Hodges, sorry. I make the motion, reappoint them. Motion, Mr. Woodley to reappoint, you're a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Siemens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number seven, old business.
This is really not old business, I just want to clear something up from, actually it was back in, um, May's meeting. Um, I found out about it and got the information I needed by the June, but we were going through budget, so I just didn't bring it up. So I thought, and I missed last month, of course, but, uh, on the flag, there was a thing, and Bill brought up about the flag being halfway down, thought it was tore up or something like that, but actually there, it was half-mass on purpose. Yeah, all flags were in the county at that time, and that was, uh, it was for about, ran about ten days. It was for fallen officers week, I think it was, around about ten days, and that was two for them. Then we just left it that way for Memorial Day. Uh, come up and we've, we've been running them half-mass for the soldiers that were killed in Afghanistan, so that was, that was the reason why that was down. So I just want to clear that up, and that's all the old business I got. Do have new business, so.
New business.
Um, one other thing too, I've had, for y'all that, when you talk to people out in the communities, I've had several community centers call and wanting work done and things of that nature, well, we just can't do that. We put out bids for some of them to be fixed, but Van Buren County does not own any community centers. We don't own them. Uh, and there was one lady that was, she thought that we owned it and that's why she kept asking for things to be done. And I told her, you know, we'll try to help as much as we possibly can, we do mowing, you know, where we have the walking tracks that we placed there, but as far as going in and fixing things there, it's kind of like, we, I mean, we just can't do it. I got one maintenance guy. Um, so we, we, we do not own any community centers. The only one that we technically own right now is the Mooneham that we're going to be sending out for bid shortly to finish that off. We do own that, and then once that's finished, we'll end up signing it over to y'all and, or to, to that community. Uh, and that will come to the commission before that's done, of course. But I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew that, we do not own any community centers. The next thing under new business, we have, Cheryl's supplied you with a letter, and what this is, is for some of y'all that, on the two hundred thousand, we applied for that, I think it was what, sometime in August, thereabouts? And we got it about the first of September, can't remember when, but typically we give them eighty-four thousand, and I urge you to do that, and there's a Cheryl call.
For the eighty-four thousand. And you have a letter in front of you, and it is signed by the school board members, and it also has in there that this is not, the money is not part of the maintenance of effort. Okay, but also included in yours is also where we talked about the last two years. It has the hundred thousand that, uh, we were talking about last year. We're asking for that also.
Now, one thing too, you can look at your, um, trial balance that's there in front of you, and this is today's, and I'll just cover this real quick. In the county general, and you know, the best time to, to really take a look and see where you're at for the county and our, and what you're looking at here is far in the month of September. Next month, Melinda's here somewhere, where is, there she is. Next month, first week in October, you start collecting taxes, right? First Monday in October, but when you look at the general fund, there, you're at one million, fifty-three thousand dollars and change. Now, that is probably one of the best Septembers we've, that we've had in seven years that I've been mayor, and that's probably one of the best that's ever been. So as far as the money needing to be there, the money's there for that to be done.
Mr. Chairman. Second motion, we approve eighty-four thousand dollars for the school. I'll second.
Mickey in a second, Mr. Woodley. Roll call please.
Excuse me, just one minute, because we'll have to add that number in there for the transfer out. Okay, I'm sorry, I've sat here and slipped through it, and I got the number from Jessica just a minute ago. But that number will have to go as one oh one, the, where the funds will be taken, one oh one, five one one, zero zero, dash, five nine oh. That will be a transfer out. Yeah.
Shaking four thousand that we paying.
I figured it's current this year.
It's the current one, we. We received it, uh, what about the first September, thereabouts.
So that is the new portion, is what we're talking about, okay.
And, and to tell you this too as well, and of course Cheryl already knows, this will be the last we get from the state because the end is scheduled, they're tick, they're ready to open, uh, first of January to the public, so.
And the last two years, we have paid them, out of the two eighty-four thousands, we've paid them forty-two thousand. So out of the hundred and twenty-six thousand we owed for the last two years, Cheryl and the board, that's where the hundred thousand comes from for the land.
We pay them this eighty-four thousand dollars, and then the only thing we owe them is one hundred more.
A hundred thousand.
And that, that concludes it.
But you're done.
Okay. That'll come from when we sold the property.
And that comes from.
That was the agreement on that.
No matter, no matter priority waste, of course, they hadn't, they've gotten till the first of October, and if they don't do it and Committee B decides to take and put it back up and it's solved again, that hundred thousand's still there because y'all made it when the sale of that property, so.
This does not affect our maintenance of effort.
Oh, it doesn't.
In the letter that she asked for on the other hundred thousand, I'm gonna go ahead and say that, that had, also didn't affect.
Also had that on there, that it did not affect.
On the sale of the property and.
No matter who sold it. No matter who sold it.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that comes when that property sells or whatever, right.
Exactly.
What would that money be transferred into, just what Joey's asking?
Going to her general purpose, that's.
I will, I will give it to the.
They'll ask her where she wants it.
They already have their revenue code in their budget.
Yeah.
Roll call.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Gerson.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle. Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Want to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Any other new business?
Yeah, that was already, yeah, it was already taken. We did, but, but we took care of that last month's meeting, so we were, we were all right. No, sir, no questions.
Yes, Lisa Bolden would like to address the commission.
What happened with the light bill was when they read the meter, the county's accounts are sent to the county mayor's office, that's the address. So Jessica called me, and she goes, hey, the fair, the light bill come over here. I said, well, throw that thing on Gregory's desk, how much is it? And she said, it was almost 1,500, what was it, three meters? Okay, okay, $1,500, and I said, well, that sounds like a pretty good deal to get a fair like this county got two weeks ago, $1,500 is all the county's got in it. You know, and I mean, I'm going on, she throws it, I said, when's the meeting? She said Tuesday, didn't think anything about it. Then I find out, you know, Greg, they had a budget committee meeting, he took it to Budget Committee, they thought that I was just sticking it in there, or that's the impression I got, that they felt like I was just throwing that bill in there and wanting it paid. That's not, yes, yes, we want it paid, and I know that the county's been audited, I don't feel like it would be an audit problem, and I'm just asking right now for y'all to think about it in the future, that is county property, those are county meters, it's a county account, and it's $1,500, okay? $1,500, we worked our tail off. Now, that's not what I was going to do here tonight, and I was going to do it next month because I wanted to have better numbers, but what, I just wanted to give y'all an update. Three years ago, Greg asked me, well, I don't want to talk in that, they can hear me.
Facebook wants to hear you.
No, Facebook don't. Three years ago, Greg said, hey, the fair's kind of dwindled down, they got through four members, what about you and your bunch, you know, y'all doing it, I don't help them. We did, and it's hard work, and we've picked up some along the way, and everybody does their part, and I'm not just talking about the Fair Board, I'm talking about the Highway Department, the city, Don, just whoever we call, Daniel, you could not, like here, and the Meat Man, you know, everybody does, you call them, you ask them, they show up, they do what they can, and everybody hates me, and I know they do, but I don't care because we had a good fair. We had one in 19, and I was just going to give you a little recap, when we took it, when we went in on the Fair Board in 2018, there was $10,000 in the bank, and I hate to even tell y'all how good we've done, because I'll never get my $1,500 light bill paid, but in 2019, after the fair, before COVID, at the end of the year after the fair, we ended up with 18, and I'm rounding these off, but it was 18.5. And that's pretty good, right? Okay, so 2020 COVID hits, we can't have a fair, we wanted to do something, and the only thing we did was the car show, but by the end of 2020, we had 19,000, a little over $19,000 in the bank, and that was just from our fundraisers after the fair, before COVID, and then the car show. Then we sat into it this year, full blast, and I've paid all the bills, I've still got some checks out there, but they're little three and $5 checks, hope they, if y'all are on Facebook, cash your checks. And today, with the checks that I've got that are outstanding, we've got $27,382 in the bank. Now, that's, that's pretty good, but, and the only thing I get at, and I want y'all to think about when you're not putting the fair back in the budget and all that, is that to get a carnival in this county, and this is just the Fairfax truth of it, if you think you know somebody can do better, I'm ready for them, you've got to sign a contract that you're going to pay them $30,000. The, this group that came this year, we signed a contract for $28,000, we looked up, they went to Dunlap and Papel, and he gave us a deal, and, and he put on a good show, he's promised us he'll come back next year and bring at least two more big kid rides. I mean, we, we have this money, we have to sign that contract, and that first year, it was scary, because we had $10,000, and we had to pay $30,000 when they walked out the door. But we got in there, and we done that concession stand, and that is not easy work, and we could not do it without everybody, all of y'all that worked, and I know everybody did, and the food they donated and all that, we couldn't have done it. And that's all I'm getting at, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, it took 5,000 people pull this fair off, it did, and we were able to let every kid ride cheap, and I want to keep doing it, I'm old, I want somebody else to step in, and you know, this new fair group wants some new blood in there, because one day, I like to just go watch it, and we've got a lot of big fundraiser ideas playing, like permanent fundraisers, things that are going to make us money all the time. But that $1,500 light bill, I promise you, it was not a poke or a slip in, it was a slip in, I didn't slip it in, but it was a good idea on Candy Forks Park, they sent it here, but I don't, I don't think $1,500, the county's not putting anything in for the fair in two years, what's $1,500? We worked our tail off, and that's all it was, but we'll pay the 1,500, or we'll, I'll bum it out of somebody, surely. But that's all, I just wanted y'all to know we're working hard, and if you know anybody wants to be on the Fair Board, just tell them to holler, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay the $1,500 electric bill for the Fair Board.
I'll second.
We need to get the exact number.
Well, you know, we didn't pay because we didn't do any contributions, that's why it came back to Committee A, I just.
Can we just put it in the contributions area?
No, we can pay it on the electric bill, it's 1506, 38.
1506, 38.
Well, 1506, you can't do 38.
We can't forget the 38 cents.
You can't put 38 cents in there.
We'll do 1507 if y'all want, but it's 101-518-00415, that's the electric bill line.
1507 for the fair electric bill.
Mr. Chandler, there a second? Mickey. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Gerson.
Yes.
Cherry Hickey.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Any other new business?
I have no other new business unless y'all have any questions about the trial balances, I can go through those real quick, if you want.
They all look good. Better than they've been in years. At this time.
Anybody have any questions? You'll notice there at the very last big number of 570, 435, that's the COVID money where Henry was talking about it being in capital projects, or Jessica was the one mentioned it, I think, so. Pardon?
We're okay financially.
But if you have any questions, let me know.
Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, we got to do Randy.
Yeah. This is just to insert into the minutes and everything, he's just got, I think it's a paving, um, deal there, he gave it to Terry, and Terry passed it out, so I don't, Terry may know more about it than, no, he's just wanting this put in the minutes of what he's doing as far as paving and the roads and things of that nature, and what the cost is, and who's doing it, the whole nine yards. So I, I don't think he would have to have any kind of vote or anything of that nature,